Okay, we got sound over there? Can you hear me? Everybody hear me okay? Alright. Well, good evening. At this time, I'll call to order the regular business meeting of the city, of Stevieville City Council meeting here on Tuesday, November 5th. And welcome, everyone, tonight. We've got a full agenda, but a lot of good topics and great to see the crowd here tonight. And we've got some folks taking classes and with Leadership Stevieville, so it's always good to see you here. I have invited tonight some folks from Backpack Buddies here to speak for the, to the council and to help raise awareness within the city of Stevieville of great things that they're doing. And just, we'd like you to come forward and make your presentation, please.
My name is Jackie Greenroyd, and I'm representing Backpack Buddies, Cross Timbers Backpack Buddies. We have a couple of the ladies on the board, and my husband is here. We're all volunteers. This is, Backpack Buddies is a national, it's not really an organization because each unit is independent. They do their own fundraising, they do their own facilitation. We purchase our food through the Tarrant area food bank. They serve the thirteen counties west and south of Tarrant County. Last year, some ladies from Oakdale United Methodist Church heard about Backpack Buddies from some friends in mineral wells and from Glen Rose and other places, and my husband and I had been involved in Abilene and Eastland. So we all got together, and we have, I think, five churches that are sponsoring it now. And we saw the need in Eret County for some food for some hungry children. What we do is, we purchase food from the food bank. We pick it up, it's already packaged, it's ready to deliver. On Friday mornings, we take it to the school. The school counselors choose the children, they know the children and their families. The school counselors pick the children, and it's totally anonymous. We have no idea which children get food. The children go to the counselor's office on Friday afternoon, and they pick up their food and take it home with them. And these are children who either have no food on the weekends, maybe their parents work two or three jobs and they just don't have time to cook, or it could be children who are neglected. Maybe there's drug abuse, or someone's in prison. But they're hungry children in our area. I have some statistics, and these are from, these are government statistics that the food bank got. In central elementary, seventy-three percent of the children are at risk of being chronically hungry. And I know that sounds incredible. We live in our nice, safe side of town, and we don't see the need, but there is a tremendous need here. Chamberlain, there are fifty-six percent. Hook Elementary is fifty-five point two percent, and Gilbert Intermediate School is forty-nine percent. And we're not reaching all of those children, but we're working with the counselors and we're, we're trying to grow the program each year. This year, last week, we served eighty-five Stevieville children, fifteen from Lingleville, and we're adding three way, and we have three children, ten children from there. So we're up to a hundred kids a week that we're helping to feed. And we take, we get our food, I mean, our funds to purchase the food is strictly donations. Our parent organization is Oakdale United Methodist Church. If any of you feel moved to donate to Backpack Buddies, it's six dollars per weekend per child. So for twenty-four dollars a month, you can feed a hungry child every weekend. And we'll take any amount, we're not proud. We're just happy to be able to help these hungry children. Our mission is to alleviate childhood hunger in the Cross Timbers area by providing nutritious, child-friendly foods for weekends. All of the food we give the kids is shelf-stable, and they can just open it and eat it, there's no need for any cooking. They just open the food and eat it, and it's available when they want it. So, are there any questions? Does anyone have a question?
Any questions?
Yes. I brought some brochures, and I'll leave them here if anyone is interested.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to just applaud the group for the great work that you're doing for the community, and just encourage anyone that is interested to get in touch with the group, Backpack Buddies. They're doing a great thing for our community, and I think reaching out to an area of great need, and it's something that we need to continue to grow. So, thank you very much. Alright, are there any other Citizen General Discussion items? Anybody would like to come forward and make a presentation on? Okay, if not, we'll move to the, to the next item on the agenda, which is the Delinquent Tax Collection Report. And Mr. Jeff Brown is here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought the tax collector along with me.
Alright.
That's a good thing. By the way, she's helping run an election today, so she's been a busy lady.
I'm the voter registrar right now.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's my hat.
But I drug her along with me anyway.
Right.
As y'all know, I come sometime in the fall every year to give you a little bit of an update on what we've been doing previous year on your behalf in terms of collecting length of property taxes. This past year, we begin, continue to work with length of taxes as they, as they come about. I'm gonna run through my little letter report here right quick, and then talk a little bit about your delinquent tax balances and what the role looks like. This report, this report covers September 1 through August 31st of this, we continue to do our mailing program. As you know, taxes are turned over to us in July of every year. We immediately begin to do mailings to notify people that delinquent taxes are present, that we're aware of them, and to, we try to get them to voluntarily pay them if we can. We're gonna talk about some litigation and lawsuit activity here in a minute. It's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to get people to voluntarily pay their taxes, so we don't have to, to be, place, place a city in an antagonizing position with regard to its citizens. But, in that regard, we mailed four hundred and sixteen letters to taxpayers who owe delinquent taxes to the city. The next paragraph, we talk about lawsuits. We filed fourteen lawsuits this past year, and they, they were worth almost a thousand dollars apiece for the city, a little under twelve thousand dollars in taxes that we sought to file suit on. On the dismissal section of the, of the report, when we get a, when we file a lawsuit, we, again, we continue to try to work with taxpayers. Ms. Carey's office continues, continually tries to work out payment arrangements with taxpayers who contacted to do so. And, in that regard, a lot of times, we can, we can dismiss a lawsuit after everything's been paid. We, during this period, in the past year, we dismissed twenty-one lawsuits. And that means the taxes were paid, penalties and interest were paid, all the costs were paid, and we were able to, we had to go to court to take a judgment to get those taxes paid. Those lawsuits involved almost twenty-four thousand dollars. We did, however, take judgments in six lawsuits. And I always stop and take the time to thank the district court. I used to thank Don Jones, but he's a lawyer, the district judge, and now I get to thank Jason Cashin for giving us the opportunity. He always gives us the court time we need. He even last week let us interrupt court because we needed a document signed, and he's very good to work with us. And the sheriff makes Jeremy available to us, the clerks do a great job. So, those county officials are helping the city get used to length of property taxes collected. And when you come across those folks, if you say a nice word and say that I said something nice about them, they won't believe you, but please do say it. But, they really do a good job here in the county, and it's certainly worth me applauding their efforts. In those six judgments we took, they were for forty, literally under forty-two, forty-two hundred dollars. The next paragraph talks about releases. When we take judgments, we don't, we don't always have to sell those, always have to sell the property. Sometimes the taxpayers will get them paid, sometimes the lien holders will get them paid, sometimes they'll get sold and get paid through a sale. But in any, in any event, we were able to release four of those judgments this past year, and we collected sixty-four hundred dollars in that regard. We did sell three, three properties that involved eighteen thousand dollars. And the only thing the council really cares about is the next paragraph, which is we helped collect ninety-six thousand dollars for the city. And that's, that's the bottom line about what we're trying to do. And we're, as I talked about already, we're trying to do it in a way that it's not adversarial, not confrontational with the taxpayers here in the city. We're trying to do as best we possibly, as best we possibly can without litigation, without assessing those kind of things. One thing I did, are there any questions about that, by the way, before I jump off and go on to talk about that? One of the things I wanted to tell you is, is the city's in really good shape in terms of its length of tax row. As of the end of September, you had about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars on that tax row. That's not, that's not an extremely large tax row considering your current levy is approximately five million dollars. Probably by this, by the end of July next year, that tax, that delinquent tax row will be probably under eighty thousand dollars, probably under seventy thousand dollars. And that's, that's a, a good, a good sized role for your, for your city. And I mean, a good sized role, I mean, it's, it's a small row, it's not a big row, it's not a big problem for the city. We're continuing to work, and we continue to work with city staff and through Ms. Carey's office to get these things done. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, well, let me just thank you for your work and, and for the county, and it's a great team effort, I mean, for us to be able to, to stay in front of this. And like you said, the numbers are, I mean, they, they seem large, but in the, in the big scheme of things, they, they're, they are small and they're manageable, and we need to work together to keep it that way.
And Brady assists us, too?
Yeah. There you go.
I make the big bucks off that.
That's a, that is a good joke, but...
Yeah.
Is he delinquent?
No, no, no. No.
He gets appointed to represent persons who are, who are not present from time to time.
Okay. Well, and I guess putting your other hat on, it's, the polls are still open till seven PM tonight, so...
Yes, yes. We're still going, we're still going.
Well, thanks for doing that, and for those of you watching at home, when you're done watching us, go vote if you haven't done so today, same for everybody here. I want to ask for a show of hands about who voted and who hadn't. Alright, a lot of hands going up, and so...
I, I love you Williams County, but I didn't vote today.
Alright.
But not here.
Okay, yeah. And only one.
I'm going to approve Mr. Brown's report.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll see.
Alright, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to accept the report as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote to accept the activity report on delinquent tax collections for the period of September 1, 2012, to August 31st, 2013. Great, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, the next item on the agenda, we'll move to the Planning and Zoning Commission section. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider a request to rezone from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District, Lot 8, Block 139, City Edition, located on the Block 2200 of West Harleton Street. And ask Ms. Chu to give us a staff brief, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request to rezone this property, which is a two-acre tract of land located in the 2200 block of West Harleton Street, from R1 Single Family Residential District to the R3 Multiple Family Residential District. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation from the commission. You do have in your packet the staff report, a map of the area, and you also have an ordinance on page seven, which would affect the zoning change if you concur with the commission's recommendation. The applicants here, if you have any questions of him, and I would be happy to answer any regarding the staff report.
Okay, any questions for them? Mr. Nix?
Betty, the property west of this is already, is it R3?
Yes, sir. That is the Stevieville West apartment complex.
Okay.
That white area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, 2251 West Harleton.
And have you had input from the surrounding property owners about this proposed change?
The only property owner, or one of the property owners that contacted us was Steve Munson, who is an owner of the property at 2241 West Harleton, and it was just request, just asking a question, not in opposition or in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you. Alright, and this time, I'll ask anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in favor of the request to come forward. Just state your name and address, please.
Brad Allen. And I won't take just a minute. I want to thank you for your consideration of your, of this matter, but more so, thank you for your day-to-day service, week-to-week, month-to-month, that you citizens put forth for our community. We worked hard with the surrounding property owners, we contacted folks, talked to them, see if there's any concerns. I, like Betty, got none. Talked to Steve Munson, he thought that y'all are both in favor of this. At least, that's what he told me. Had one lady rub me or called me on my cellphone and asked if her, her grandkids could swim in the swimming pool, so that was about the extent. I think it's a non-controversial issue, as far as I know, and no one's talked to me. It's a piece, it should have been done a long time ago in conjunction with another property development. This is a piece of property we would hope that we put to good community use in providing housing, possibly for, you know, for the college, for Harleton, or professionals that work at Harleton. And we hope you pass it. Any questions for me?
Any question? Mr. Nix?
Mr. Allen, since you're proposing this change, obviously you have plans for the property, multifamily units, or...
That would be, you know, we don't, this is just the start, Allen, of the, of the planning process. We don't have immediate, you know, plans drawn at this point in time. Our thoughts are, we would, you know, the number of units is not gonna be enough for a large type of commercial product, it's gonna be a, something that more, would be more of a, you know, high-end, in my viewpoint, is what I'm thinking, type of apartments.
Okay.
There's not gonna be enough units on there to be attracted to these large developers, but it's, it's a difficult number, and it'll be a good addition to the tax base.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, approval of ordinance 2013-13 rezoning said property from R1 to R3. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to approve ordinance 2013-19 rezoning as stated. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the motion carries unanimous vote, approving ordinance 2013-19 rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District, Lot 8, Block 139, City Edition, located on the 2200 block of West Harleton Street. Alright, thank you. That concludes the Planning and Zoning Commission section of the agenda, and now we'll move to the Public Works Committee report, and I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Nix.
Mayor, we met on October the 8th, and we met with Bill Cooper, who is the manager for the Middle Trinity Groundwater Conservation District. And he presented a very interesting and thorough report on the history of the district, some of the workings of how they deal with various issues that they come in contact with, permitting, well spacing, some of the other issues that they deal with. He gave us some updates on some of the things that are going on in the district, and he is also our representative at the State Water Board, and he represents this area because of his position with the Groundwater Conservation District. It was really just an informational meeting, there was no action necessary, or none, there was no action recommended and none necessary. It was basically an informational update for us to understand how that organization works, and also so some of us who may not have had the opportunity to meet him could meet him and ask questions if we desired to. There was no action necessary or recommended by the committee.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nix? Okay, and, Alan, I want to thank you for your committee's effort in, in this area. You know, for those of you that, that have been paying attention, you'll, you'll know that we've had two, two sessions on this, one dealt with the Upper Leon surface water predominantly, and then here the Middle Trinity with groundwater. And water's a big issue in the state of Texas right now, a lot of discussion going on with that. And the council's obviously trying to stay in tune with that and make sure that we, we understand what our situation is there, too. So, Alan, thanks for, and your committee for that great work there.
Yes, sir.
And, okay, now we'll move to the next item, which is the Planning and Development Committee Report, and Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee also met on October the 8th. Couple of things on our agenda, we received a report, a report from Janet Whitley, who's the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, about some work that they're doing. They have split their commission into three subcommittees, and they're working on three different topics. Permitted uses in all districts, landscape requirements, and exterior facade requirements, and annexation. And we eagerly await their report to us about their findings. Mrs. Chu reported to us that the technical boards will begin to review and update the 2012 international codes, and the last thing was the task force update. I, I don't really have anything specific, but I know the task force has met with the builders and developers, and so we also eagerly await that report. Nothing on our agenda that would require it, though.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Evans? Okay, Scott, thank you. Alright, now we'll move to Environmental Management Committee, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 29th, the Environmental Management Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Cross, Mr. Daniel, and Councilman Nix, we met to discuss the renewal of our, our trash contract with Progressive Waste Solutions. We had some very good options to consider, I believe, and I commend the staff on putting together some preliminary options to consider with the Progressive Waste Solution. Ultimately, though, what we, the committee, recommended to pursue forward with was a, a contract that would conclude, would include our current services, which, the highlights of that, in case you're not familiar, are twice-a-week pickup, bulky item pickup, we also have a onsite disposal facility here on Bates Street that Progressive operates as well. We decided to keep those services and to move forward with a contract price of eleven sixty-five a month. And so that was the recommendation, eleven thirty-four a month, I'm sorry. I apologize, I'm scared right now.
I'm getting scared.
I didn't just hear your new contract on the city's behalf, and I'm gonna take it off the top of my head. So, the new contract price will be eleven thirty-four a month, in keeping the current services we have. There's some issues I look forward to us working on, and I know we're going to, some of which are, of course, continuing to addressing some of the spill issues that they do occasionally have. I know they've made a guarantee to us to work on that, to continue to work on that. Other issues being, I think we're gonna try to make some advancements in the recycling center they have out there on Bates Street, to kind of dress that up a little bit and make it a little more user-friendly. Also, an important issue to me, and I think to the committee, was getting a commitment out of the Progressive Waste Solution that they're gonna continue to use our landfill, which in return makes, puts money back in our pocket as well, which I think sometimes is a, is something we don't take into consideration when negotiating these contracts. But overall, though, we're glad to be in a partnership with Progressive Waste, they're good partners for the city, do a lot for our city, and so I guess at this time, we'll make the motion to authorize staff to contract with Progressive Waste Solutions at the current level of solid waste services at the proposed rate of eleven thirty-four per month.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Nix, to authorize staff to finalize negotiations with Progressive Waste Solutions at the contract content at a price of eleven thirty-four per month. Any discussion?
It is the residential price.
Residential price, yeah, thank you. Any, any questions or discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote to allow, authorize staff to contract, finalize contract negotiations with Progressive Waste Solutions. And I want to thank the committee, you know, Brady, for your leadership there and, and the discussion. We, we met more than once, and there was a lot of things that we talked about. You brought up recycling, and, and I know we spent a lot of time talking about that. And I think, you know, what, I think the council would agree with me saying that we, we debated whether Stevieville is ready to do that at the, at the residence yet or not, so, you know, more feedback that we can get from you as citizens, the, the better as we, as we look to the future. But we went ahead and did what we, we felt like we could do within the content of the, of the contract, and that's, that's make it more accessible, more visible. And so for those of you that are interested in recycling, you should see some, some better opportunities to do that. And so I just want to thank the, the committee for their, their work there. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the Public Health and Safety Committee, and with that, Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wait just a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The Progressive Waste guys are leaving the room, and I, and I, I want to just say thank you to, to you, I mean, one of the things that, that Mr. Kaiser pointed out to us as a group is that, you know, a contract relationship shouldn't be us versus them. A lot of times, you have to work together to come up with the best solution as you move forward, and, you know, we certainly appreciate Progressive Waste and their, their willingness to, to partner with us as a city to come up with best solutions, not just what you want versus what we want. And so it was a collaborative effort, and, you know, the staff has to be applauded for their due diligence that they did, but also, I mean, y'all brought to us some, some ideas that I think will make us as a city better serviced, and so, so thank y'all as a team for, for, for that.
Well, thank you, and, and we look forward to working with y'all for the next contract period.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Alright, sorry about that. Russ?
Not a problem. Thank you, Mayor. The Public Health and Safety Committee had a meeting on October 29th. Members are Brady Pendleton and Doug Savine. We had two items to discuss. The first item that was on our agenda was an ordinance regulating the keeping of bees. And the reason we had this information to look at was earlier this year, a swarm of bees left their apiary in a residential neighborhood and attacked several people. At least one dog was killed, and a number of people were stung by the bees. A beekeeper was called to remove the bees, and it brought to our attention that we have no ordinance on the book, books regarding the keeping of bees in city limits. In order to protect the community from future incidents of this nature, it was recommended to the committee that the council enact an attached ordinance prohibiting the bees within the city limits. At the committee meeting, we had visitors that were beekeepers, and one gentleman was from Glen Rose, and the other people, local. I see at least one of them here tonight, did we have two? Just, okay. And this is a complicated issue. We, we have to balance the ability to enact an ordinance for the public safety of our residents, but we also have to understand the importance of the chain of nature and the importance of, of the bees and their pollination of, of gardens and vegetables and their part in the big picture. So, after hearing reports from beekeepers and getting information of how to reach them to get additional information in the future and include them in our decision-making, the item was table, and the committee will be waiting for further information to decide the item was tabled, and the committee will be waiting for further information to discuss in the future from staff.
I did get one request.
Okay, all right. Milton Horner? Would you like to come speak for three minutes at the podium? It's not necessary, we're not gonna take any action, but we'd be glad to hear from you if you'd like to come to the podium.
Yeah, I sure would.
Okay.
My name's Milton Horner, I live on 210 Roland Street, Stevensville, Texas. At my house, I have two beehives, and I have one beehive on Clinton Street, on Slum. These are European beehives bought by Bee Weaver Queens that are bought and purchased and mailed to me. I do gather bees and relocate bees. There's people in this room here tonight that have relocated bees from their house and from their backyard. My point is, is that even though bees are important, there needs to be spacing. And what I'd like to see is, there's something that I saw in the paperwork, is that if you have bought, store-bought bees, or European bees, the genetics are important for our town. A town such as Stevensville represents a Thanksgiving or a smorgasbord for bees. The nectar flow in a city is a lot better than the nectar flow in the country. Reason being, you have McDonald's and Grumps, and everybody else has sodas in their trash can. They have my garden, his garden, their garden. They have Grandma's fruit trees and her flower beds. That being, means the bees do real well in the city because there's less pesticides. Where in the country, flowers bloom for a season, the farmer sprays for grasshoppers, it keeps the grasshoppers from bolting, and then those bees eat that pesticide, go back to the beehive, feed it to the larvae, and those bees then die because metamorphosis does not take place. So bees have came into town because one thing, it's healthier, and the nectar flows longer. You'll always have feral bees. My point, to do away with my beehive, is to do away with genetics. You want my nice bees to mate with those bad bees. If you get what do away with me, you do away with nicer bees. Is it as simple as that? I have European bees that are store-bought, that will mate with Africanized bees, that will make a hybrid bee. Now bees do get aggressive, but they are also very friendly. I have two dogs, a five-year-old, and they're in my backyard. My neighbor is a freshman in high school, he mows my yard, but he's never been stung. Bees can be tamed, they're just, this is how you handle it. I want to say that in the city park, that was called, about a beehive that was in the city park in a tree. How many times the dogs and people walked by that tree? Yet, no one died, no dogs got stung. This story that we hear about, this story we hear about, I don't know any, I haven't, I've contacted, the city police chief has not yet contacted me back, and I have not heard the whole story. I don't know who the beekeeper is, I don't know anything. To me, it's a, if you look at the statistics from aggressiveness to other critters such as dogs and bees, you'll find that bees are a lot less likely to be aggressive than other things. Also, the city of Tyler is known as the city of roses. It has a hundred thousand plus people, no bee ordinances, but beehives everywhere, big bee club. I think it's premature to outlaw bees.
Thank you, Mr. Horner. So like I said, that item has been tabled, and we will be waiting for further research on the issue from staff. The other item...
Before you leave that, I just gotta say this. And I don't want to weigh the committee's future decisions by saying this, but I just can't see Stevensville without honeybees.
That was pretty bad. At least it didn't go after you. The second item the Public Health and Safety Committee discussed was a public alert warning system. And we heard from Chuck Elliott from the fire department and Shay King with the police department, who provided us with comparisons between NEXOL system and Code Red. There was a question and answer session, and the recommendation from the staff to the committee was to choose NEXOL because it is slightly less expensive than Code Red, but it offers more versatility to the communicating community, allowing us to send more than just weather alerts. We're able to send community notices, advisories. If there's a major accident at a certain intersection, or if there's a train derailment, or if a ballgame at Spard has been canceled due to rain, this is a type of system that can be customized, and you can be alerted to whatever items that you have selected. And it's also a little more versatile than Code Red in that the signup for NEXOL can be done by text as well as via the internet. The cost for this, for one year, is ninety-five hundred dollars. If we have eighteen thousand residents, that comes out to fifty-three cents per year for every man, woman, and child in the community. There was a unanimous recommendation from the three-person committee to send a full council that NEXOL be our choice for a public alert warning system. And I did a little research recently on citidata.com, and the area historical tornado activity in Stevensville is above the state average. For Texas, it's a hundred and sixty-seven percent greater than the overall U.S. average. This is an item that Councilman Hogan called us to get several months ago at a meeting. And at this time, Mayor, I would like to move, we accept the recommendation of the staff to use NEXOL as our public alert warning system.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to approve the staff recommendation to purchase the FAST. And what does FAST stand for again?
First Alert, Stevensville, Texas.
First Alert, Stevensville, Texas, powered by NEXOL at a cost of nine thousand five hundred. All right, any discussion? Mr. Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read the following statement. "I support the acquisition of an early alert system for the city of Stevensville because the most important responsibility of the city council is to enhance the safety of our citizens. An acquisition of such a system will help us achieve this goal. However, I continue to have concerns about both this system and the process by which it has been discussed, and I need more information before I can support the system proposed at tonight's meeting. At last week's Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, I tried to raise several questions about both the need for this system and its financing. Questions to which I wanted answers included, does the county have such a system? Are city residents' taxes helping to pay for the county system? Are city residents already being protected by the county system? If city residents are already paying for the county system and are being protected by it, why must we have a city system as well? If city residents are helping pay for the county system but are not being covered, why not? I raised these questions not because I wanted to embarrass anyone, but because I wanted answers. Critics had said that the county system would not cover city residents, whose tax dollars were nonetheless helping pay for the county system, meaning that city residents were being required to pay for two systems, including one which would not benefit them. I simply wanted to learn the extent to which such charges were true or false. I was therefore taken aback by the degree to which others deemed my questions inappropriate and worked to limit debate on this subject. I believe that as residents of both the city and the county, we have a right to ask questions with the expectation of receiving answers. As the democratically elected representatives of city residents, we indeed have the duty to do so. I find it strange that such questions, especially those dealing with the financing of these programs, should be considered inappropriate, especially given the intensity of our recently concluded debates over tax, spending, and budget issues. Nor do I understand how the raising of such questions in the absence of answers can undermine the search for a healthier, working relationship with our counterparts in the county government. I cannot help but notice that this issue was raised as a last-minute budget amendment and was not significantly discussed during the many lengthy budget work sessions held by the city council this summer. Those who supported the budget amendment, myself included, were working well within the existing rules of procedure and were not guilty of any trichantry of any sort. However, because this issue came before the council in that fashion, we did not have the same opportunity to discuss it as thoroughly as would be beneficial. In the future, we, myself included, should abstain from supporting budget amendments involving issues of significance but for which opportunities to debate are so limited. Moreover, we should always remember that the adoption of any new spending program will frequently require a reduction in spending elsewhere or the raising of new revenues either through borrowing or increasing the tax rate. Thank you."
Okay, any other? Sure. Okay. Yeah.
I'm Freddie Goble, live at 413 Blue Bonnet. I just have one question. I'm not an A or A or N, or anything on this here. I just want to find out, several months ago, matter of fact, the man was working on it for over a year, to have these sirens in here for the city to alert for tornadoes, things like this here. And I understood we was gonna get from the power plant, that their use of the power plant in here to do this job. And I don't know whether this is connected or anything like that. But I just wondered, did that ever take fruition or anything?
Mr. Goble, we're still gonna be doing the outdoor warning sirens. They're about to be implemented or already partially implemented. They are a different way of notifying people of danger, danger lurking, or danger on the way. This type of system notifies people by landlines at home, internet on their computer, their cellphones. And the outside warning system just deal with people that are outside that may not have other types of communication devices on them.
Thank you, Russ. Any other discussion?
I have just a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. I do serve in this committee, and of course, I was obviously part of that unanimous consent to move forward with this. But I apologize to Councilman Cross, I guess I wasn't listening particularly to him, sorry, Dr. Cross. But there was a comment made by the mayor that was, I guess, the same lines of Dr. Cross's about who's to say we're not covered. And, you know, that's a good question. And that's kind of what made me begin to think more about it after the night to follow the next day. So after consulting some more with the county, the news I was told is that we currently are covered by Code Red, and that all of us that are residents of East Rock County can sign up for Code Red because the county has not yet made a decision whether or not to deny access to that. So that being my number one concern, the safety of all of our citizens, I was relieved to hear that, that we're all, can register for Code Red. And the NEXOL system is a great system. I know at some point in the future we're gonna need that system. And not so much from the emergency notification point of it, but more importantly, from the community alert standpoint. A lot of times we hear the complaints that we as a council or as a city are not transparent or do not do a good job communicating with our citizens. But if we are to adopt the NEXOL system, that should do away with all those complaints because right there on the palm of your hand, to your cellphone device, you can have any and all news of what's going on in the city. And so I look forward to that. But the ultimate question to me is, is now the best time to do it, seeing that we are covered by Code Red emergency notification? And ultimately, after thinking about it that way, my answer to this could be no. My vote will be no, because I think we're acting premature at this point. I think we as a council need to wait off and see what the county's gonna do as far as denying our residents access to Code Red. And then, of course, if the county takes such action, then I do believe we have to act immediately and to ensure the safety of our citizens, come up with our own system. Now, the whole issue of whether or not it's fair to be taxed by both entities to our citizens is an important issue, but of course, my number one concern being the public safety of our citizens. So, good news is, we are all currently covered by Code Red. You can go online when you leave here and sign up for it. Nobody's gonna deny you the access to Code Red to be covered for emergency notification. Secondly, don't forget, we still have the free NEXOL version here that we can all text 888-777-764012 and receive alerts that way as well. So, and then also to mention, Mr. Goble, the outdoor warning sirens, that they're gonna be upgraded from what we have. So I do feel like at this time we are protected, and so I would, my vote will be no on this issue.
Any other?
Just a few comments, Mayor. I respectfully disagree with my very good friend who bought me lunch today. By the way, I appreciate that. Mr. Pendleton? That was great Mexican food, by the way. I think at the end of the day, you put staff in place that you believe in and you trust. And last week, we point-blank asked the staff, what system do we need? Even if the county includes us, which it sounds like we are, should we be in Code Red or should we be in NEXOL? And our staff looked at us and said, we should use NEXOL. And I think at the end of the day, you put people in positions that you trust. And I trust our fire chief and our police chief, and I know you do too. I know everyone up here at the front does. But the question was asked last week, even if we could be in Code Red with the county, should we still be in NEXOL? And our staff said, yes, we should, because it's a much better system. You can opt in via text message, which you can't through Code Red, which I think is a huge benefit. And the ten thousand dollar cost, I'm under the impression that the ten thousand dollar cost is if you split the cost with the county. So you're talking about, really, if you went out and got Code Red on your own, it'd be roughly twenty, a little over twenty thousand dollars. NEXOL's nine thousand five hundred. And at the end of the day, I think that our staff, the folks that protect us, need to be the one that's in charge of this system for the city of Stevensville. Not the folks, the good folks in East Rock County, I have nothing against them. But I want, if there's a gas leak in our city, I want our city staff within minutes to be able to go on NEXOL and alert our citizens. They need to be the ones, in my mind, that are in charge of this program. Another thing, too, if we use Code Red through the county, we can't, as it's been mentioned, we can't go on, send out pushes to folks about city council meetings or about community activities if they opt in for that service. Now, we're not gonna start emailing everyone in the city about city council. I know y'all love coming to city council meetings. But we're not gonna text you unless you opt in, but it gives us that service with NEXOL. And I don't think it's a very difficult decision if we need to purchase this or not. It's nine thousand five hundred dollars in our budget. I think it's a no-brainer. You look at what it's done in Granbury, you look at what it's done in Cleburne, some type of emergency online notification system. It's a lifesaver. It's a great way to communicate with our citizens. And I think at the end of the day, we need to listen to our staff that says, we need NEXOL. It's the best system to protect our citizens and keep our citizens engaged. So I'll support the chairman's motion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I have additional comment. Today I called the city secretary and asked if I could get a copy of the oath of office that we say whenever we're elected. And I just wanted to read to you what we say when we take this office. Because if we pass on this and punt the ball like Mr. Pendleton says and count on the county for the safety of our Stevensville city residents, and it doesn't work out well, then we're not keeping our oath of office. It says, "I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the city council of Stevensville, Texas, of the state of Texas, and I will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God." Fifty-three cents per person, per year. The cost isn't a problem. The money's not a problem. There's twelve thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars in the budget for emergency warning system. You can make excuses all day, but this vote, what it comes down to, and Mayor, I would like to have a roll call vote, because I want all the citizens to be able to read about it in the paper and read about it in the minutes. Who wants to protect them with the best system available that's offered to us, that's recommended by staff? And who doesn't? Because I think this is important. Putting it off isn't an option. Attending to it and getting the system enacted as soon as possible for the protection of our citizens is, in my opinion, the only way to go, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a couple of things here. I want to thank the staff. I told Mark earlier... I told Mark earlier, the presentation that the fire and police departments made about this system was very professional and very well done, well thought out. They had done a tremendous amount of research. And Mr. Cross, you, you speak of this as if it came out of a rabbit's hat. But I think we all know that Mr. Kaiser has been, and staff have been working on this for months. This is not a new occurrence. So, and, and I think, so it's, it's important for citizens to understand that this is not a flash-in-the-pan idea. It's something that has been thought about and methodically studied. There was, there's been discussions for months with the county about which systems to use and, and research about this, this item. I think that our, our awareness of this, and we talked about tornadoes, and I appreciate your comment, Mr. McDaniel, about tornadoes. But my experience tells me that what happens is what you don't expect. Just ask West Texas about that. And so to think that we can put this off and wait, I think, is, is remiss in our responsibility. The second thing I would point out is that I know a little bit about command and control. I've got a professional lifetime dealing with command and control issues and with the National Incident Emergency Management System. And the, the relationship between the county and the state and the city from a legal perspective is one thing. The ability for emergency responders to deal with and communicate to those that are in harm's way is another. And what we heard from the, the first responders the other night, I think, is their assessment of how they can assist the citizens of Stevenville best. And that's what their recommendation is. And I, I don't think this debate that we have had is about the money. I think it's about the safety. You know, Brady, as you, as you pointed out, the recommendation that the committee has brought to us unanimously is a system, not a funding. I mean, if y'all want to punt how we fund this, let's do that tonight. But let's step up to the plate and at least pick a system. Because we owe it to the citizens that we are charged to protect. I think that it is, as I told someone earlier tonight, let's don't try to solve world hunger while we need to open a food bank. That, that's really what this is. I mean, we, we have a, an, an issue to deal with funding. I have brought up in committee the need for us to talk about emergency response, call 911 centers and the staffing of that, and how we spend money there. This is an example of that. But I also want to caution us as a council as, of getting into the county's budget decision process. That, that's not our role. And, and we, we need to partner with the county on how to integrate ourselves with them, not, and not see this as an issue of not being able to work together. Because I, I think this is, there's been great discussion between the city and the county on these systems. And Mark, I applaud you, Chief Chu and Chief Bridges, the work y'all have done to, to work with the county on this. This is a win-win for us. And I, I think what, what we don't need to lose here in this is, is the, the money and the, the budget discussion, all that. Hey, let, let's just set that aside tonight. And, and let's think about the, the question the committee has brought to us. And that is, what system best serves Stevenville, Texas? And that, that recommendation from the police force, from the fire force, and from the committee is, is to choose NEXOL. And, and I think, you know, if, if we need to, if we need to look at the, the finance committee and have a discussion with the county about funding, you know, so be it. But I, I, I would hate to see that, that encumber our ability to, to prepare to meet the, the needs of our citizens. And it is $9,500. It is also interesting to note that a lot of communities have both systems. And so another way to look at this is a one-year trial run where the county has Code Red and the city has NEXOL. And at the end of the 12 months, we come together and based on no kidding, field testing assessments, say, what's best for all of us? You know? So in one way, we've got the best of both worlds. I, I think the, the things that we heard about Code Red tell us that it's a good system. But I think NEXOL is best suited for a municipal situation. And that's what we heard. So I just share those thoughts with, with the council. I, I, I want to let the citizens of this, this community know that we all care. And this is, this is really important to us.